Okay. Welcome, everybody, this evening. Do we have any?
No.
Everybody fine? Okay.
Public comment.
All right, yeah. Sorry, public comment.
You're trying to end your meeting.
I am. Consent agenda, the minutes for the previous meeting, appropriations, and like cabin pass for for E-21. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion if we accept the minutes.
Okay. Second?
I'll second it.
Okay. The move is seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries 60. Old business, the North River Walk extension update.
So they're hoping to be here the next week or the week after to finish up their own job right now. The hope is in the next couple of weeks they can get down here and get all that buttoned up to be completely done with that project.
Okay, very good. Anybody have any questions about that? Okay, moving on, let's go to Viking Industrial Painting, Rick Penner. Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, right or left?
Thanks for letting me be here, guys. I'm Rick Penner, I work for Viking. We are a water tower maintenance repair company. We do cleaning, inspecting, painting, repairs, anything that has to do with maintaining a water tower. I've lived in Heston, and I've been in coatings and water tank industry for a long time, to say that, for a long time. I've been with Viking now for the past four years, and before that I worked for the same place for 20 years. And I worked specifically with specifying coatings, that type of thing, mainly on water tanks, so that's my background. But anyway, so quite a ways back, I came and plugged up your tank and took a look at it, and I think, do you guys have those reports in front of you?
Yeah, I have them for us.
Okay. So what we were discussing earlier, I'll just say about the overall view of the tank is, it's got an aluminum coating on it, okay? Aluminum works good. Your tank hasn't been painted in a very, very long time, and I attribute some of that to it being aluminum. I don't like changing from aluminum. You can do it, but there's two ways of doing it. You either, on your tank, it would require a full containment system, which would basically be like a gigantic parachute over the whole thing, and containing the lead, and you said adding 100,000, you're way low.
Am I?
Yeah. It would be more than that. I just priced one, I priced two of them today, and it was, that was, it was closer than 100 to, I mean, closer to 150 to do a containment line. When we do that, though, you can put the Cadillac system on it, coatings have advanced, and you can do all those things. But then the other option would be, if you wanted it to be a color, would be to use, there's a very specific primer we use, it adds another full labor step, and quite honestly, I just don't like changing aluminum once you have it, because it works. And here is a, I have a little spray out sample of what the aluminum actually looks like when it's new. Part of the problem with going over the top of aluminum is, part of the characteristic is, it's got leaf in it. That's the aluminum, right? So it's kind of like a bond breaker for the coating. So if you get, you know, it causes problems when you have to go over the top of it. Anyway, you can see that there's, there are some areas of corrosion feeling that are going on, but overall, the exterior coating is in good shape. I have no problem going over the top of it. And what we go, and the aluminum coating that you go with, it's economical, and it goes on very thin, so it's not a huge cost compared to other alternatives. So the things we look at are, we look at the coatings, the interior, the exterior coatings, we look at the safety things, we look at the sanitary things. We just try and get, bring up everything we can, bring you up to compliance with OSHA standards, AWWA, KDHE. So the first thing I point out here is this manway. OSHA says it's got to be 24 inches. This one's 12. Most guys we have working for us won't fit through there anymore. And what, so what we usually recommend, and we do this on a lot of tanks, this is that center riser column right here, okay? But usually we'll leave that on, put a compliant one on the other side, a multi-bolt one that's 24 inches in diameter, leave this here, because that way, when you're doing maintenance on the tank, you can run all your hoses, cables, everything through there for your rigging, and then you're not obstructing the other side. And believe it or not, stuff happens, there's a guy here a few years ago up by Salina, and they couldn't get him out of there. Somebody got hurt on the inside and they couldn't get him out. So anyway, it does happen. Okay. I'm okay with the foundation, I mean, some of these foundations have been redone, and redone really well, they all look good. I'll say this, this is your overflow pipe, okay? So when the tank gets too full, it automatically overflows, right? Well, OSHA, KDHE says it's got to be 12 to 24 inches from ground level, and equipped with a screen and a flat bar. So yours is at 54 inches, it's up here. It's not a big deal, just extend it down a little further and get it compliant, and then there should be like, and I don't remember if there's a splash pad there or not, that's not a big deal, you know, city can just pour a little concrete base there, that's all it needs. So that's one of my recommendations. Another one is the ladder. The ladder is so high up that you can't get to it hardly, it's 20 feet up, you're not going to have a bucket truck to get up there. So, and I realized somebody cut the ladder off because they didn't want people getting up there. Well, it makes it really hard to do maintenance on your tank. So what I recommend is adding another 10 feet to it and installing the ladder gate like this, and just for liability sake, if nothing else, if anybody were to get up there, you've done all you can to get it that way. And that's, that's a typical thing that we do on water, on ladders for water tanks. Okay. Another thing I recommend is, is putting a safety climb device on the ladder. The ladder doesn't have anything on it now, and we often put on a cable, and I wish I had a picture here I could show you, but anyway, a cable works really well, it's easy to maintain, it's easy to work around, when you're painting or anything else, you simply pull it out of the way. And it's so much safer. So when I'm climbing your tank, you've got stuff on the side of the ladder, I mean, there's cables and stuff going up there, so for me to climb it, I have to pretty much, I have two lanyards and I hook off, and I need, and I try and hook off on the rail in case a step would break, but it makes it really hard to do. So you climb up four or five steps, unhook, hook, unhook, you know, just keep going like this. Well, if that, if that lanyard is down here and I fell, it's going to hurt a lot. If you have a cable hooked to you right here, it's so much more secure and safe. So that's a recommendation. Another thing is, this, your tank was built by PDM, and I can tell by the way the handrail is, but, but that handrail, OSHA says it's supposed to be 42 inches, you're supposed to have a midrail, and you're supposed to have a 4-inch kick plate on any handrail. Your handrail isn't quite 42 inches, I think it's 36. I feel safe with it there, but I don't feel safe with is not having anything across the middle here where you can slide through. So I recommend putting a 2-inch flat bar all the way around, we do that on a lot of tanks too of that style. The ladder that's on the roof is an old rolling ladder, so you go up the shell ladder, and then when you go up on top of the roof, it's an old rolling ladder, it's not attached to anything but the vent in the middle. And that's, the ladder is supposed to be welded and secured, so I would simply take the existing ladder you have and attach it with standoffs to the roof by welding. Simple way to do it. The tank has, these are cathodic protection ports, they used to hang anodes into your tank for corrosion, and some of them we repaired, we put temporary magnets over those, what, two years ago now? Over these openings that were open, that, you know, things could get in. But those are things that are not in use anymore, so what I recommend doing with those is just taking some quarter-inch steel plates, put them on, seal, weld them, permanently take care of the problem. Okay. There's your vent. It is not in compliance with A, well, I mean, there's the screen. But a vent is, is, AWWA and KDHE say that you are to have a failsafe vent, which means it's got two screens, and it's got a mechanism for the screen to go up and down, so if it ever got plugged, or iced over, or anything like that, it, it can move, so it doesn't suck the tank in essentially, so it can still breathe. So that would be an obvious thing to do. This is what, the inside, you can see that's a cathodic protection port there, there's some old wiring from it, here's a couple of them that were open, but you can see it's got a little bit of structure on the inside, and there's quite a bit of corrosion that's happening on the inside of the tank. Another point I'll bring up is, and this is, I know you can't see in this picture, but that, that, so when that tank fills, it's actually got a fill, that drum that goes down to the center, we call it a mud drum, or that column, the fill pipe is at the bottom of that, it's a stub that sticks up about that far, and it's probably six or eight inches diameter, that's where, that's where the water comes in and out of your tank. And so that goes all the way up through that column and into the bowl. At the, at the transition between the bowl and the, and the column, it's just an opening, so it's almost like a flummery down there, so I recommended putting a grate over that for safety reasons. Here's just more interior corrosion. Something that is not in that report that I didn't, I thought it was a reflection, but it's not, this is actually your fill pipe, and, or your overflow pipe, I'm sorry. And that, this is not a recommendation in our report, but it is a recommendation that I put on the proposal, because that is not supposed to be inside the tank. That should be going out and then down. And the reason for that is, you know, what happens when you poke a hole in that thing? I mean, you're just going to lose all your water out of your tank, it doesn't make sense to have it on the inside. So that's another thing. And KDHE's documents flying out say you cannot have that on the inside of your tank. This is just an example of what I do for coatings on the inside of the tank. I almost, I do, I always use zinc primer on the inside, so there's only one way to paint the inside of your tank, and that's you blast it all off and you start over, and you have a specific surface preparation standard that you have to meet for anything that goes into immersion service. So, so that would be the first thing you do. Then we would apply the zinc primer to the whole thing. By using the zinc primer, you know, I talked about having those anodes that hang in there, now the entire tank is anode. It's got, it's like galvanizing the inside of your tank. It will add up to 40% to the life of your coating system by adding that zinc primer. It sacrifices itself. So I always do that, and then you see this? This is looking up in a bowl of a tank, but that's a vent, that's a manway, or actually, that's secondary manway, two manways, but we stripe all the welds, and all the seams, and all the corners, and all the edges, because that's where things fail, right? Coatings want to go away from corners and edges. So, and here's an example of it after it's coated. Actually, that's Belleville's tank, which is exactly like yours. And I did that one in 2019, I think. So these are all my recommendations, except for the overflow pipe on the interior, moving that to the outside. It's basically everything I just talked about and how I would do it. Going back to this, I, I had a company kind of put together these logos.
They have those.
Oh, they do, okay. Well, Nick, Nick said something about, well, what would happen if you could put the logo, I was just planning on putting on two sides, but he said, what about three sides? And I'm like, eh, I don't know if that'll work, but actually, I think it might work pretty good. And disregard the fact that this one's gray with white on it, but look at the compass, that kind of gives you an idea. If you look, there's, you could put three, you could put three logos on that are the same size, and, and still be 17 feet apart from each other. Does that help? Okay. And I don't know, maybe it would help to look on Google Earth or something, and look down on top of your tank, and if you kind of see, you can, if you use this little compass with that, you could get an orientation for it to see what might work. But that's just another thought. I priced it originally with putting two on, but we can do three.
And then what, at $6,500?
It would be another $6,500 to do a third one.
Is that painted on?
Yes, it is. And I use your thing for that, when I do that.
All of us weren't here, but Mindy did mention that she's been up there with the drum, and it would be nice to have three so that you can see it from all sides of.
Yeah. I, I think it'd work good, honestly. I mean, I was very pessimistic at first, because I've never, I mean, the only time I've done that is on a gigantic 2 million gallon tank, but I got to looking at this and the measurements, and the way that things, when I drove up there before I came here, I'm like, I think it'd work pretty good, honestly. Getting the colors, you know, I, I mean, this is printed on a piece of paper, and I'm worried about your city logo colors. I mean, I think it'll be fine, you just need to make them a little darker. I think it would work okay. And I brought a color, that's why, well, here, I'm just going to leave this here with you. So you can look at this, and you can look at colors, and see what. This way, that way will give a better representation of what it would look like. That's all, none of that matters, I mean, as far as having to know that today, but, you know, just be one of those things down the road we have to figure out.
What's the timeline? Are they approved, how long is it to start, we done? There you go.
It's, that's the question I get the most.
Cost of win.
Yeah, those are the two bad ones, yes. The one thing is difficult, just because we've got pretty much our spring all booked up, so I would say it would be fall, summer or fall.
That's the 22.
The 22. That would be my guess. Now, last year, we moved all our crews to Texas for the winter, and we know what happened there with the weather and everything else, and we've been, we got stuck down there an extra three or four months that we weren't planning on. So our scheduling is a moving target, and just because it's not raining here, the crew that's supposed to come to your tank, it may be raining there. And let's face it, how many days are not too hot, too cold, too windy, too rainy? Too much humidity? I mean, it's just, it's really hard in our business to nail down dates. But that would be my guess. We like working in the summer if we can, not everybody lets us, because it's peak water usage time, so certain towns can get around that easier than others.
How long of a project is it?
I would guess it would take, I mean, there's a lot of steelwork there, so that would be the other thing we could do, would be to maybe get, a lot of that steelwork can be done without raining the tank, so you can kind of work ahead on it. I do that quite a bit, if I've got guys in the winter, a lot of times, I mean, we could put the vent on, we could do the ladder, and we could do everything except for the manway and that interior overflow. You could do all the rest of that work, and that, that would help a lot. And it helps our paint crew too, so they're not working on top of each other. But I would typically say that's a 30 to 45 day job, something like that.
And when you stay 30 to 45 days, is that what the tank drained?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We don't want to paint the outside when it's full of water either, unless we've got, unless it's being isolated, because you're pumping cold water in it, we have condensation and all that. If the water were to stay the same temperature, we could probably get away with painting the outside, and we'd paint some tanks with water on the inside, but I try not to. It's only when we absolutely have to, everybody knows what the risks are. But I would anticipate it would take that long, 30 to 45 days, and the coatings on the interior typically take a week to cure.
You know, it might be a situation if we get into a hot summer, and we may have to ask our residents not to water during that time, because it could be a strain on our system, direct pumping water during that time, you just never know.
I know, and everybody's system is different. I'm dealing with somebody right now, he says, I absolutely can't do it, and he's getting a pressure tank. He's running a pressure tank for a month. And that's another option. And that typically costs another $5,000 to $10,000, I think, for a month.
We just put in variable speed pumps.
Oh, great.
So I don't think.
That helps a lot.
I don't think we have days issue with their product.
If you want, that'll, that's the best thing you can do. Yep. That makes a huge difference.
So, okay.
We use NSF epoxies on the inside. I'd really like to do yours next year, because starting in 2023, we're going to be required to use different epoxies than we have to use now due to VOCs. The epoxies that have been around for the last 30 to 40 years work awesome. They, they're forgiving, if the conditions aren't perfect, they still work. The newer ones, and we use a lot of them, we use those too, but they're just a little more finicky, we have to be a little more careful with them. I like, I'm old school, I like the stuff that's worked, and we're being mandated to not use it starting in 2023. So anyway, I think it's good timing to do it for that reason, if nothing else. And it also helps the cost a little bit too, because those other, like newer technology costs more money, so.
So the cost without the extra logo is $241,500, with the extra logo is $248,000.
$248?
$248,000.
So the public knows how much is in that, that fund that?
So this, the money that's being used to pay for fixing the water tower and painting it and all that is money that we got through what's called the HEROES Act, which is COVID relief funding. We got $321,769.72. That water's earmarked, or that money's earmarked to do water infrastructure or water runoff, or for infrastructure improvements like building a building, or fixing a building, or something like that. That's all that money can be used for. So this fits with what that money's allowed to be used for. So it doesn't cost, it doesn't cost taxpayers more money on the water bill or anything like that, it's money that was given us, to us from the federal government as part of the COVID relief funding, so. And you said you were getting a bunch of jobs off of that.
Yeah, I'm getting a lot of response from that, for sure. It's helping a lot of places. Unfortunately, the little tiny towns, they only get $10,000, and you just can't do much with it. They're the ones that really need it a lot of times, but yeah, it's, it's helping a lot of communities, actually.
So Councilman Berners brought up having it on three sides, and I think it's a good idea. It's a, it's just a large billboard that's, that can be seen from quite a long ways away, and it'll be up there for a long time. $6,000, the price of billboards, they don't last very long, that'll be up there for a long, long time, so I think it's 439.
I have an issue with it.
You said 17 feet in between.
I think that's what, isn't that what that diagram says?
It's a good one.
Right here. Put my glasses back on, let's see it. Should be 17 feet in between, I mean, it could be moved a little bit one way, or, I mean, it can be rotated any way you want it. I mean, if you want it to be equal, it would be 17 feet in between.
And we can change this, because I think we'd want one facing the north, wouldn't we?
Yeah. We would orient it, our guys would orient it with where you want it.
Sure.
You have one issue with the ladder, though, right?
We got to think about where the ladder is. My idea was.
Where is the ladder?
Well, honestly, okay, which way are we facing here? This is.
That's north.
Okay. That's north, though. If I had it like this, then it would be right, right? So the ladder's like right there. I think it works. That's my point, is I think where the ladder's oriented and the way that that's laid out, I think it works.
But we really need to have one over here.
Well, this could be moved over, but there, but no.
It could be slid over right up to the ladder, I guess.
Yes. Yep.
Which means that this one would be seen more, better from the west, and this one would be still seen from the south and the east a little, but.
And this one would probably need to come around a little bit.
Yeah, I think a good thing, I think if you got to move it, or, and look at it from the top, you put this on it, you know, kind of get an idea, I think you could probably.
You've got to remember that that side of town isn't laid out true north, south, east, west. This side is.
Right.
And so what we're thinking is north over there is not north.
Right.
So.
Get it. Well, it could be oriented and moved a little bit, I mean, just keep in mind that the ladder's in the way, and that's really the only thing that's in your way. And whether it'll look right, if it's too close together in one spot, I mean, a couple of feet, whatever, nobody's ever going to know the difference. But I would encourage you to pick colors that are darker rather than lighter, because you'll see it better.
Yeah, that blue basically disappears up there.
Yeah.
You had to pick a darker blue.
It does. And.
I guess that's, I guess that's green. I like green.
Yeah. And like I said, I mean, I don't know. It's just, it.
There's definitely a difference.
It's printed on paper.
Yeah.
That's why I thought it'd help to have an actual sample.
That's great. I'm glad we have that out, that helps a lot.
I have one question, on the 248, using the three logos, logos on the tank. Okay, does that include the, you said there'd be cost for moving the overflow pipe to the outside of the tank?
Well, yeah, that's on the proposal, yes.
Yeah, he just didn't have it on this.
I just didn't have it on that report, because I didn't see it. I didn't see it till later, after, after I did the report.
That's a turnkey price.
Yep.
So $248,000 to do all.
Yep.
I think it's a no-brainer.
Yeah.
I would move that we approve the cost of $248,000 with Viking Industrial Painting.
I'll second it.
Okay, can we move the seconded? To have our water power painted, repaired and painted with three logos, at the cost of $248,000, with Penner, and, for Viking, I mean, I wish it was better, but it's Viking. All those in favor? Opposed, opposed, and carries. Okay?
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for sticking your light, dude.
You got it.
Good explanations, thank you.
Tell your neighbors about me.
We don't do that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Okay, moving on, Swab Eaton Addendum Primary Engineering Report for City Lake, page 35.
Yeah, so I talked to Stewart, and he put the denim together. We already had a not to exceed cost of $28.5. To do the report with added water in it, it's $14.5 added to that not to exceed, which makes the total of that.
$43.
$43, yep.
Now, this is.
And that would do the preliminary engineering in order to send to USDA, KDHE, and all of them, and give us back a checklist of things that would need to be done, and give us a better idea of the funding and things like that.
And we talked about that PER last, our last meeting, that.
Yeah, that was the last meeting or meeting before that, I can't remember, so.
Anybody have any questions about that? Okay. Do I hear a motion to accept that proposal?
So move second. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept the Swab Eaton Addendum to add the water PER onto the other one. All those in favor? Motion carries 60. Okay.
And at this time, I would like to move that the later council, city attorney, and city administrator go into a executive session for 15 minutes for current client privilege.
Do we hear a second? A second. Okay. Okay. The move to second to go into executive session for City Lake's client privilege, attorney privilege with the council, the mayor, the attorney, and our city administrator, administrator, all those in favor? Close, motion carries sixteen. I think we're ready for governing body. I'm gonna go first this time, if I can agree with you. The Kerry Thirties, Kerry, right?
King.
That's right.
King.
I'm always calling Kerry, Katie, Katie, Kerry. Anyway, Katie Thirties, third grade class, invited us to talk with them, they had a, the, it's called a.
It's a persuasion.
It's called a reading.
Yeah, it has to do with, it was persuading somebody to do something.
Yeah, it's called, but it was their reading, it was their reading assignment. And they talked about primary, you know, examples and secondary, you know, stuff. And so, anyway, they invited us to look, or to come and listen to some of the things that they had to say. They picked a park, they went and observed, and then they presented it. And they presented it to me, and I called some of you, some of you were out of town, I couldn't get ahold of everybody. But anyway, it was me, and I went and listened to wonderful little kids, they were great. And their main thing, they went to Derlon Park, and their main thing was that they, they touched on was, was safety. And I told them I would bring it up to the, the council and let everybody know about it. They were concerned about the fact that the mulch that they fall on, when they fall off of the tractor and the teeter totter is wood, and they're afraid somebody, or rock, and they're afraid somebody's gonna get hurt. They were worried about some of the sharp edges and playground equipment, that it's steel and it's sharp. They felt that plastic would be a better, you know, solution. They've done some research on this. They felt that it would be nice to have a sign there that told the playground rules, like how many on the teeter totters and different things like that. Some nighttime light would be nice, they thought. They thought that the little digger thing is just about shot, and they, they love it, but they said, you know, you can't get it to do anything. They said there was graffiti in the little house and that they would really like to have that as a classroom project. I did not tell you this, Nick. As a classroom project, if, if, they would get the paint and they would go and paint it if it was possible. They would like to participate in cleaning up the park, they're, they're planning to go over and pick up trash and sticks. One little boy wants to donate his birthday money to whatever, and another little boy said, I have a bank, too. So, you know, they were very, very sweet. The swings, they're worried about the swings, they don't think the swings are very safe, okay? And I told them that we would look into all of it and see if there's some of it. I said, I know we can't do all of these things, maybe we can do a few things and, and help the park be safer. And I, you know, thanked them and told them that it was really good that they had done a lot of observation. And like I said, they're planning to kind of make it a dear little project over there. They said they'd be happy to help with fundraising if we needed to do some fundraising. So, anyway, I just want to make sure that those third graders know that we're listening. So it's, you guys have any thoughts, suggestions? I talked to Nick a little bit about rubber maul, she said it was very expensive.
We looked into it, we looked at doing rubber maul, which I think.
Yeah, for rotary.
It was over a hundred thousand, more than a hundred thousand dollars for a rubber maul down there for rotary. I looked at it for the park over here, the new swing set that we put over there. And I got, I was qualified, we qualified for a grant for fifty thousand dollars, and it was like a hundred, over a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars for the rubber maul. That's a lot for a rubber maul.
I thought, I, you know, I don't know, the teeter totter is mostly what they were talking about, the, underneath the teeter totter. And I thought, maybe if we did like a five-foot square below the teeter totter or something, I don't know.
Well, I can talk to Aaron, and I'm not sure where Aaron got all the mulch for the grade school and stuff. I know they got a grant for that, but he said it was still really expensive.
Well, and I even thought that I might talk to Ms. Thirty and ask her if they would like to write a grant for it. The kids would like to write a grant, some of the foundations around here for that. It'd be kind of neat if they could learn how to write a grant, and they're glad, great, it'd be awesome if they could do that, I don't know what they can do.
Well, a little background on that, Mayor, is we've talked about that park for years, and, and the consensus was that fifty, fifty feet or fifty yards over, the city's got this beautiful playground equipment. And we always talked about that we wanted to try to lessen what we had in Derlon, since they already have this nice playground.
Over the car, at the school.
Yeah. We, you know, at that time, we talked about it, we thought, why should we put all this money into this park when just right there, there's a beautiful park? And I will agree, I think some of that equipment over there is probably dangerous, and.
You know, even maybe some plastic swings as compared to some wooden swings. They talked about maybe painting some of the wood, like on the teeter totter. They're very worried about the wood on the teeter totter and the swings, I think it was the swings. And, you know, they, they were very, they were very convincing. Of course, when you're hugging somebody and smiling up at them and everything, but.
The wood depot needs some work.
We talked about that.
It needs, before it's painted, it needs to have some structural work done to it. That's something that the city needs to look at doing.
Well, and I thought, you know, it wouldn't be a hard thing to do some signage and some of the other things that they, they asked about to, so that they know that we're listening for sure, you know? So, we might kind of just keep.
Maybe a grant for some new playground equipment might not be out of.
Well, it's the same thing, when we were, what was I looking at? People were upset when we took the playground equipment from Elk Creek because of stuff, insurance said we had to get rid of it. And I looked at, and it's just amazing how expensive it was playground.
To me, there's really a need down there for playground equipment, and not so much over at Derlon, since there's a school playground equipment right there.
What can I have a bond?
Yeah.
So, I mean, I've looked at all that, when people were complaining that we took that out of there, but then when you look at what the grant you can get covers, then the cost of a, just a pretty ordinary playground, it was a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, and your grant's like thirty or forty of that. You know, I'm, I'm sure there's cheaper things, but that was, the company I was working with, that was as cheap as they had.
Sometimes cities sell.
Yeah.
Equipment that's, that's up to code, you know, not like what we took.
Yeah, John Howard's been able to find a bunch of that stuff.
Yeah, maybe we could find a use set to go over there.
I mentioned to him, the, remember the xylophone we saw at?
Yeah, conference.
At the conference show. I mentioned, I said, with something like that, some things like that, different, just activities rather than they ran equipment, they thought it would be great. So, that's another thought we can look at. Were you gonna say something, I'm sorry?
No, I wasn't. I was being smart aleck.
What, what were you saying?
I said just go to Walmart, but I was kidding.
Oh.
Might be better than what we have over there now.
It could be, it could be.
Probably not over to supply.
I don't know, the teeter topper boards maybe could be at least be replaced in with heavy.
Well, I think that's very doable.
Paint, something like that. Anyway, okay, well, kids, if you're watching, we are, we are taking it under consideration, okay? No, that's scary. Okay, and, and I, Nick and I, well, there was several of us. You were there, Mark was there, and Sharon was there. I think that was all today at the chamber luncheon, and I thought there, we have some more new people coming to town, and it's really exciting. So, okay, well, let's next go with Jason.
I'd like to remind people about their campaign signs and how close they've got them out to the road.
Actually, with campaign signs, there is no, campaign signs are the only thing that are allowed to be next to the road. So, we can't enforce moving those on the other side of the sidewalk. So campaign signs, we can't mess with.
State legislature took care of that.
I remember when we had that.
About three years ago.
Yeah.
Yes.
Because I had that question already, and I said, there's nothing we can do about it until after the election. Once the election is over, we can, if people don't pick them up, we can pick them up, and they'll be behind the city hall until somebody wants to come pick them up.
I'd like to get five days or something like that.
Yeah, it's five days, and after a month, we can go and.
I, I was thinking it was still the same deal as it was a couple of years ago.
State squashed that one example of our sign ordinance. Okay, no, no city, county, anyone can interfere with political signs on route right of way. Unoccupied route right of way.
Which is what all we.
Yep, which is what all that is.
Yeah, all that is is route right of way.
Good enough.
Something I learned, too. Do, do you have anything else?
Nope, those, without anything.
Okay, keep.
I will let you say, Mayor, thank you.
All right.
Nick contacted me about a large purchase of trees for the tree program. And so I'm going to get with Sharon, who's on the tree committee, and Chris Cant, so that we can look at, this individual wants to buy five trees, which is unbelievable, but.
But he's wanting it on the north, newer North Riverwalk extension, which I think it needs trees.
Sure. And then we also, there's, we're gonna have to discuss possibly maybe altering the price of our program because the price of trees have went up, like everything else. So that's another thing that the committee needs to look at. I think I still have my formula that I used to create that, so there's a chance we may have to bump that price up.
Chris, Chris said the cost of her trees that she buys is, is one of, I think it's, I think she told me twenty or thirty bucks or something like that.
She told me normally the, the people that sell trees, that, that type of business, nurseries, they usually double the price of what it costs them. And I said, well, we can't do that. She said, oh, no, I don't intend to do that, but I'd like to have a little bit to help offset the cost of shipping and so forth. So that's something that we're gonna have to discuss. We do have a tree down there that we're, that she's gonna replace, that the customer, the citizen, is not happy with the tree. So she's happy to replace it, so that's not a big deal on that. The second thing I have is down at the commission, and our, and the Historic Sites Committee is, is well aware of this. We have two artifacts that we would like to offer to the City of Council Grove. One is a school bell that was located at Four Mile School, and it's been on the lawn at the commission probably for, I think, Sharon, forty years, maybe fifty years, fifty years. The other is a grist, a grist mill stone that was part of the Saunders Mill. We have the engine over there in Derlon Park that was part of that, that mill. And we'd like to, the city is, this is the official transfer de-cession form I have here, offering these two artifacts to City of Council Grove. So what needs to happen is I need to sign this, and if the council votes, then the mayor would need to sign one copy for the city, one copy for me. So I'll open that up for discussion.
Where would we put them?
I think our talk was that the bell would go to the Fairview School over in Cren Park, Council Oak Park, and then the grist mill would go right with the, the engine over in Derlon Park. And the grist mill is, the grist stone is very heavy, but I'm sure our city has equipment that can move it.
Does it need some sort of a foundation or?
It's on, it's on it.
We moved it for them.
Yeah.
So we moved it.
That was kind of part of the deal that they, the city offered to move them off the lawn for us. But the grist mill's already on a concrete block. And, and so is the, the bell, it's already on a concrete.
So they don't want to be structures?
No, I think with a, maybe a little hole dug in the dirt and it just sat right in there, it'd probably be fine.
They're pretty heavy, people aren't gonna be knocking them over.
Yeah, that grist mill's a, it's a monster.
Yeah, you run your car into it and the car would be tore up.
And I have some signage that were, that was on them at the commission that can just go with them and be put to describe where they came from and what they were used for and so on. But, anyway, that's, that's the stuff, it's, the official way of doing it, they are sessioned into our collection, and they get in a session number, and then when we get rid of them, we have to de-cession them. And, and part of the form says, which I know you'll never do it, but you can't sell them. That's part of the agreement, you can't.
That's what I was, I was gonna put them on eBay.
That's why we have it. Because he was there before eBay, so eBay.
Marketplace.
Because if, if for some reason something happened that parks were reassigned or something, it could be given away to another.
Yeah, there's nothing legally that would keep us from stopping you from doing that.
It's a house on Wilfrid, we'd love to have a bill, a bill, and a, your stone is really strong.
Have a bell right across the street, and I'm there. Anyway, I'm.
Y'all have anything to?
Sharon's part of that committee, too, so.
We had talked about this, God, like a year ago.
This has been, it just, the state, it just takes forever, and it has taken forever.
Do I hear a motion or a second?
I agree with the city. Go ahead, if you'd like to.
I'll make the motion that we accept them from the state of Kansas.
Do you want a second? It's been moved to second to accept the school bell and the grist mill stone, all in favor?
I'll abstain.
Okay. I would want to, okay, motion carries. Okay, do you have anything else?
That's all, Mayor.
Okay.
I have nothing to say anymore.
Okay, Sharon?
I just have to announce that I went down and looked, we finally have a railing on our amphitheater.
Oh, you stole my.
Oh, sorry.
That's just one less thing you have to talk about.
Well, it was just pretty exciting to see it there. Thank you, Nick, for pushing that along. You know, we're, we're done with activities there probably for the season, but it's there for the safety measure from, from here on out. So it was pretty exciting to see.
It looks nice.
It looks very nice.
I went down after lunch and looked at them. They look, they look really nice.
Yeah, so.
Worth the wait, huh?
Well, just one more step down here now. The, the next step is, is what we can do to continue our construction plans down there, but that's another day. That's all. Thank you.
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Nick?
So, I would like to take the screen down. I don't, haven't got any interest from anybody wanting to use it and get it put in storage. One of the things we want to do, we have some paint left over from when we painted the front of the screen. We want to take the, we have three bygone buckets left over. I'd probably take another two buckets of paint to paint the back of it, get everything sealed up, so it doesn't, whether when we do leave it outside over the summer and stuff like that, it's gonna be used. Which would leave us with one bucket of paint, and that can be used for touch-ups when we're taking it down and moving it around if we scrape it up or something. I think I talked to a few of you about, there was a concern about the city buying paint out of town. Just to clarify that, I called Adams Lumber and spoke to Sean Meyerhoff about buying paint from Adams before we went out of town to purchase paint. They did not have it in stock, and they would have to order it, and we needed it that day. The paint that is left over is not being returned, we are using it to paint the back of the screen. So all the paint is gonna be used. I've talked to Sharon, she's agreed that the pageant would pay for the paint. I went and picked it up for them, so. Just so that's clear, because I, for some reason, that was something that was going around town, that we were going out of town buying paint and not shopping locally. I tried to do that, so.
Do we have an area to put, put this screen in?
We're gonna talk to Hartman, that's where they store the Voice of the Wind stuff now, in that big building over there. And I don't think, he'd probably be fine with that, since that's where they store that scrutiny stuff at already, so. So I was gonna talk to Chris. The other thing I was thinking about when I was down there looking at the stage and the apron, and one of the things that you guys wanted to do was put down wood chips or dirt. One way we could do that, and I don't think it would be a bad thing to do to that stage and stuff, is do some kind of sealant or epoxy on it. You'll get a lot longer life out of it, and it will keep it from staining. And then they could do, you could put dirt on it, or you could put wood chips and it'll just sweep up. And I think that will also help with some of the, the cracking that's happened there, it'll seal that back up and take care of that stuff, too. So that's something I think we probably ought to look into in the springtime next year about doing that.
There's a lot of really interesting coatings you could.
Well, I got it, I got it in my garage, and the stuff, I mean, I spill stuff on it, I weld it, I've, and it doesn't, it doesn't.
There's probably different kinds that go outside, everyone goes inside.
Denise Hartman, when I was down there and they were putting lights up, talked to me about something that Chris knows about. So I was gonna talk to him about something for down there.
I think that'd be a good idea.
If you could make that stage look like it's made out of wood.
You could. Yep, yep. So, that's one of the things when I was down there looking at it, and we had some, obviously some of that, that much concrete settles and you get little cracks and stuff like this, but that would seal all that up, and you wouldn't have issues with it cracking after you epoxy it and seal it, so. And with that, that's all I got.
How, have we heard anything at all about the graffiti? And is it?
We cleaned it all up.
Is it, we don't have any more since then?
No, and TCT ordered all the stuff for the camera system down there. Once he gets ready to start putting that in, they have a deal where it's wireless. So we're gonna go down there to the Riverwalk Bridge, the small bridge, and look for a place to set another pole, so we can set a camera. another pole, so we can set a camera down in that area as well, and it will be a wireless link to a camera, so we're gonna look at that as well, once Matt gets all the equipment installed and sees how everything works, then we can look at doing that, so.
Have we talked at this, with the council about the night drone?
No, that just happened last, in the last week, so, the city has received money from the area foundation, I think with the help of TCT, if I'm not mistaken, to get a night drone for the police department, it covers the cost of the drone, and it covers the cost of all the, it was a ten thousand dollar grant.
It's actually gonna cost, it's actually gonna pay for, they found out last week, that it's gonna pay for their iPad, their training.
Yep, all of it, it covers it, yeah, we ordered everything already, it was like.
And it went through the area foundation, but the money came from a bank.
Okay.
It was a, there was a grant from the bank, and it was matched by TCT.
Right, yeah.
That's what I was told.
Yeah, we got a check from the area foundation, but yeah, that's the background.
Yeah, but it went through the area foundation, so.
Yeah, I think all the, the equipment and the iPad and all that stuff was around seventy-six hundred dollars, and then they're, we're gonna send two guys to train you to learn how to fly it and use it, and things like that.
And the night training's quite a bit harder than the regular training, right?
Yeah, it's a different level.
But it's gonna be a huge asset, I think.
It'll help with a lot of people who are getting lost, you know, we always end up kids and elderly, or people who have dementia, we've had several of those calls, and you're out, they're out in fields looking for people.
Well, yeah, but heat seeking.
Yes, it will, it does.
Wow.
You know, it got me thinking about a show we watched about people hunting pythons in the Everglades, and that's what they use, drones with heat seeking, so they can find these snakes and capture them, so.
Hey, we can catch up, those monkeys that are climbing on top of our buildings downtown, get sprayed paint.
Riverkeen.
What's that?
That's their tag, Riverkeen.
Is that what it is?
RK, it's, yeah, they, they wrote it out on the bridge behind the, the school, the last, the time before they done that, but Riverkeen, so everything's RK or whatever.
That wouldn't hurt to get a camera, eventually, I know that's state property, but talk to the state about that river bridge down in that area.
There's a lot of people.
I think there's some bad stuff going on down in that area.
And you just reminded me of something, the guys have started working on the shelter houses out of City Lake, and one of the things, we have two shelter houses that are at the end, I'm trying to think where the, you guys know what, you guys went out there and mucked down with me, those two at the end that never get used, they're finding a lot of drug paraphernalia and things like that out there, that's what it's kind of being used for, people are doing drugs and things like that out there.
You talking about the double shelter houses at Cannon Creek?
Is that where they're at? At the very end of the, as you.
Clear around, if you go clear around, over the, almost fifty-six.
That's where, as a high school kid, that's where we hung out too.
Yeah, so they're finding a lot of drug paraphernalia and condoms and all kinds of stuff over there, so Jeff and them haven't done anything with that, because that park doesn't get used, it's kind of like the shelter house at the horseshoe pit, I don't know that that gets used very often, and they're wondering, before we spend a bunch of money cleaning them up and painting them and stuff like that, it's something we want to keep up. I know Sean's had issues with drug deals out there, and that's where they caught people doing drug deals and stuff as well, if it's something we want to continue on out there, or if it's something we want to take down, and hopefully get rid of that issue out there, I mean, that's kind of up to you guys, I know, every time Jeff and them said they go out there, they clean up stuff from people being out there doing drugs and things like that, so.
One of the early thoughts was some of those, trying to develop some camping areas around, the one I'm thinking of, if it's at Cannon Creek, we went out there and looked, and there was room for maybe a two or three camping spots in there.
This is one, I think Max wanted to do the drive-in concert, and we looked at it, there just wasn't enough room to even consider having that there, I don't think that's the same one. This has two double, double shelter houses right by each other, and a park that has some pretty old nasty trees in it that probably need to be removed and things like that.
Is it on the west side of the street, or the road there?
Yep, yep, it's on that curve there.
Other side of the street from the lake.
Yes, yep.
Yeah, that's, that's Cannon Creek, right there, where Cannon Creek comes from, that's called, that's called the double shelter.
Yeah, but they don't get used, and they're getting used for their own thing, so, so it's just a thought, Jeff, I told Jeff to hold off on buying paint and messing with those.
I'm working on going out there next week.
Yeah, if there's, if there's a possibility that we could develop some camping areas, they might, might get utilized.
Yeah, but they need a lot of work, Mark, I mean, they, they're, it's not as easy as just throwing a coat of paint on them and saying they look good, I mean, the metal roofs probably need, they're.
But roofs are pretty.
They're pretty bad, they're pretty bad shape, I mean, it's gonna cost you quite a bit of money to get them, get them up to weather and good shape and things like that, so.
Well, that's because the city hasn't been careful.
Well, I, I don't disagree with you, you know, I just figured I'd bring that up, that was brought up to me by Jeff, and he was concerned about wasting money on something that, one doesn't get used, and it gets used for their own thing, that's something to consider, we can talk about it at a later date, or Keith and, I think it's Larry, right? We can go out, we can go out there and take a look at it, see what you guys think, and you guys can come back with a recommendation to the council, on what you guys recommend doing with them.
That might be a good thing if, I mean, if we're gonna, if we do rehab them, to do some good pictures of them and put them on the website.
Before and after, especially.
Well, not even before and after, just on the website, so people that are looking for places to go, you know, hey, if there's a shelter house here, we can.
They'd be self-sustaining when they, when they wouldn't have any.
Yeah, I think, I think the bigger thing is, is the activity at night out there, because it's kind of away, it's on the other side of the road, away from the lake houses and all that stuff, and that's the reason it gets used like that, you're back in a wooded area where people can't really see you, you're back there.
And that's what we did, I mean, we.
You know.
Two ways out.
But when you were kids.
We partied out there at the double shelter houses.
I know, but you guys.
Not with drugs or anything, but, but we, that's where we, that's where we partied, was the double shelter houses.
So, but they're always picking up stuff out there, they picked up needles, and I mean, just, it goes on and on and on.
Just wondering, maybe put in a wireless, if we, if we do develop it, put in a wireless camera system out there too.